And I don't see any citizens, any comments as anything.
Great, and I don't see any citizens, any comments as anything. Will lead us to rule call, please Kate.
Here.
Brian Johnson.
Here.
Brian Quinn.
Here.
Pete Ritterberg.
Here.
Cameron Swall.
Here.
Lou Dischesser.
Here.
Barry Dossel.
Here.
Thank you. I can get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as outlined.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved and moves us into the superintendent's report.
Thank you. First off, looking for action item for our annual MSBA membership. Gives us access to the policy reviews by MSBA attorneys. That is coming in an amount of $7,860.
If I could, go ahead.
Yeah. I was just looking at it. I make a motion to approve the MSBA membership as outlined.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved.
All right, now we have Mr. Norrit with multiple items, starting with our preliminary budget.
Each year as part of Missouri seniors, we're required to present the 2025 budget before the end of the coming fiscal year. We have before you for the first review is the 2425 budget. Within this document, we have certain assumptions that we're stating. We, as part of our process, just to go over quickly. We work with our school administrators as far as building apartment leaders. Start this project in the fall with September membership. And we start meetings in January and talk about our per people funding. We also talk about our five-year plans with our facilities and our technology leaders. This year took a little bit longer. We worked with our union leaders and our union representatives. About eighty-plus percent of our salaries and benefits, our contingent upon those agreements. We fund those agreements accordingly. And part of this agreement that is presented is including the funding of salaries and benefits into the 2425 year. Included in this document is assumption of increased CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, of 3.1% and 8.6% for food costs. 3.1% is the amount that we're allowed to incur for increased revenues on local revenue. In this design, we are showing an increase of that amount. We're showing an increase due to a half a percent for assessed valuation growth. Because this is a non-reassessment year. And then we're also showing the expiration of a TIF called Meridian. So we've been working with the city pretty closely to ensure that this expires and everything that's necessary is filed with the appropriate county council, county government members. We're building an assessed valuation in our revenue, assuming a little bit more than $19 million in assessed valuation. Right now, we're assuming a relatively fixed operating level levy. We're assuming continued investment in capital projects of a million dollars. We're also assuming fully funding our debt service levy, which is 89.9 cents. The amount in the debt service is there to fund our amounts for our future payments for our general obligation bonds. Currently, the only debt the school district has is our general obligation bonds. Additional revenue targets, there's a funding mechanism for based upon average daily attendance, which is called the adequacy target. The state has said that if there is adequate funding, that they're going to increase that. We're assuming a portion of that because that funding is contingent upon state revenue. So right now, we're seeing 95% of the total increase in state adequacy target. We receive a very little amount of money from the foundation fund, which is part of that state adequacy target. We receive about 92% of our funds from local revenue, of which includes Prop C funds, which is $1,437 per weighted average daily attendance. If you'd like to know more about weighted average daily attendance, I can forward you the tiers outside of this agreement. We're trying to keep this one targeting eight minutes. So we also have assumed stable title funding. We receive very little amount through federally. We're also showing our beginning fund balances are contingent upon the projections that we presented to you later this evening. Again, like we said previously, we're funding our NTB agreements. One of the more significant costs is, in addition to NTB, is the continued investment in our benefits. We're not causing any kind of erosion in benefits. So we're continuing to fund benefits in our current fashion, which is an increase of benefit cost of 9% in the next year. Private sector is closer to about 14. We were very fortunate over the last few years to not have to incur increases. We were either flat or had no increase in our benefits for the last four years. So this is an increase that, you know, against the area, we were kind of dealing for it. A lot of the COVID, what people would refer to as deferred costs started to come to, so people with knee replacements had replacements. Those were things that were deferred during pandemic. Those procedures are being pursued now, but access to healthcare is a little bit more available. And that's showing up in our rate structure. We're showing the continued investment in our refresh cycle for technology and our facilities. So with our facilities, we're assuming the completion of the Mark 20 project, Phase Two of McGrath, and then also some of the projects that are in the five-year plan that was presented several years ago from Andy Hartman. This year, him and I worked through those five-year agreements, our five-year plans, reviewed those costs in a more in-depth basis, updated those, including costs for professional services such as HDK or material testing for aid services. And also continued review for escalation potentially to Consumer Price Index.
So Andy updated that a few months ago in connection with Matt on the five-year, I think he said.
Yeah, more than five years, but some of those things that get further outside of five years are hard to put a dollar amount with. We're assuming an inflation amount. You can't, you never could have figured something like COVID and seen the escalation of some of those costs.
Can we, and maybe we do, but we used to, I thought, have Andy come and talk to us periodically because I know over the years, like, first we were doing the field, and obviously that's not getting done. So there's a lot of things that are being told, or we've been talked, have been talked about, or we've been talking about doing them, and then things change. And so as we're making changes like that, can we get updates so we kind of know, like, okay, now the field isn't going to be, whatever, I can't remember what it was called.
Grounded, yeah.
Grounded, but now we're going to do this, just because it seems like me, especially, like, that was a big topic for a long time. So like Jamie and I were telling people, hey, this is going to get done. Then things changed and it didn't get done. So we want to be able to, be able to talk about, well, we're not doing that now because of this, but we are doing this and this and this. So that, as things are getting changed, or a tit for tat is being switched, can we kind of know what those are?
Sure. So now that we speak out of turn, our superintendent does oversee facilities also himself. We can discuss that in the coming year as far as getting the presentation together. We have a detailed spreadsheet that we're more than happy to speak to people individually about. It's not something that works very well for all the presentation, but we can absolutely adapt that for that. I can help Mr. Hartman to do that.
Yeah, or we could think about a work session at some point with Andy leading that.
Yeah, just so, yeah, something that's digestible. Oh, it doesn't need to be down to that level of detail, but some of those bigger ticket items, just so we know kind of what's on the horizon next five years. And yeah, the further out we go, the little bit more vague it becomes, but just to have an idea of where we're headed would be helpful, I think.
Some of those costs, they become prioritized. So like we have HVAC systems that are being prioritized right now.
Right.
So you all have approved those items, whereas in our initial projections, those may have been a little bit further out.
Yeah, and I think that goes kind of to Harry's point about things, you know, dropping off because something else popped up that we weren't expecting. And that's understandable forecast is just that, it's a forecast, you know. It could rain tonight, it may not, kind of thing, right? And so I think it just would be helpful.
You got a light insurance, are you an insurance baseball?
Well. Hmm.
Is that?
Yeah.
Stand up there.
All right, let's keep rolling.
So again, we are continuing to provide, we are starting to roll some of the revenue out of capital projects and back in operations. We're taking that through pennies on the operating tax, and we're also doing that through our discretionary spending on surtax. So we are allocating a portion of surtax over into operations into the next year. Just for new folks, operations is what we call our teachers fund and then our general fund. And then we also have levies designated for bond projects and our capital projects. Are there any questions?
I just quickly looked at the expenditure budget detail. Did we add anything? I know there was a group of parents that came to us and talked to us about middle school, a potential middle school trip, and we were looking at some different programs and things like that. Have we added that to this?
So we have maintained the level of funding per people at the middle school. So the amount that has been allocated, short answer is, we have not increased the amount per people at the middle school. The amount that's been increased from buildings perspective has been increased slightly on transportation, but probably not to the amount that you were referring to, to continue to fund district funds for.
So it's not aligned? It was not?
It is aligned.
It is?
It's under middle school transportation.
So like those camps would be part of transportation?
So, right, but we haven't added more money. So there's a fundraiser that the middle school PTO is planning right now to help provide some more funding for some, for some bigger field trips. And then just kind of looking at what we can do with some fundraising and then also if there is something we want to change in the future with our budget, that is a conversation that the board could have.
And then I noticed that we have, like, potential revenue for the sports gates. Are we going to start charging next year for our sports events or those? Because I don't want us to put like $6,000 worth of potential proposed revenue if we're not really going to do that.
So the amount that we have in there currently is based upon this year's collections. So it's what I understood that we had charged. And there's certain things due to our cooperatives that we can't charge gates. So I believe and I hope when speaking out of line, that we charge for our football programs. So those rates, because we're not allowed, because of our co-op between Clayton and Brumford, that we're not allowed to not accept the gates or ticket costs for that.
We charged it all for our sports this year.
I mean, maybe football, I don't know.
At football, we did.
And here we did too.
Here we did, yes, we did.
I think we were supposed to.
Yep, we did.
Well, next year, you're paying twice.
I mean, I'm not saying anything, guess I was just curious because I knew we hadn't done it for a couple of years. So I just was, you know, making sure that.
We have two lines. We have tournaments, so we have income that we can share tournament costs. And then we do have a small amount to collect from our gate costs or ticket costs. So more than likely that we're in a budget struggle because I'm not typically aggressive with our revenue side. When you come back with those dollars, do you come back with budget revision? One of the more conservative figures is interest income. So that's been a real anomaly this year. So we've been receiving about 5.2% to 5.3% in our dividends. And before that, we were at 0.18. So we're, we're not fully including all of the dividend potential or interest income potential in that line.
You mentioned the Meridian TIF expiration. Is there another one coming down the road for Hamley Station?
So Hamley Station, we are not, we do have that built into our projections for it coming off. It could come off potentially earlier if the TIF is paid off early by the city. One of the things, we have a pretty close relationship with the city. So we work, those relationships work both ways, one with the parade. So what, we get second in the parade this year? So, okay, so that relationship built into a relationship with Mr. Dobson for communications. And then that relationship also worked for talking to them about the TIF. So it's, if you read city in Alderman Minutes, we have two meetings. I need them to tell me when these things are expiring because it's just not efficient to read through all of them. So they're a great partner in this. So they typically will help us to know when those things are expired. It's great. So there's no action. This is merely information. We'll bring this up for an action item in the next month. If there's anything that is a change, we'll report that to you. So we'll have a first, first reading, and then anything that's an action item. So for instance, the softball co-op that we're looking at this evening, that's not built into this budget. So that will probably be an item that we better estimate in line to update that for the budget that will be brought forward.
May I ask a clarifying question? Just to help me understand, looking at page three of the revenue budget detail, it just looks like all of these clubs and activities, we aren't budgeting for. It looks like we didn't fund them this year, but they were funded previously, and I just was curious.
Sure, so it's a great question. Activity clubs work like a check, like a check. We have a budget line item on one side of the revenue and we have an expenditure on the other side. So they basically wash each other out. They're there to account for the transactions of the activity clubs because they do have activity that shows up on our income statement. But they, but they're not budgeted for. They have an amount that they have in reserves that continues to roll for.
You want to roll into the budget projections?
So our budget projections, just to clarify, these were the projections that were presented as part of our negotiation process. So when we presented our final projections based upon all of the activation of our agreement, non-traditional bargaining agreement, this is a copy of that document from April 5th. So some of the information that we'll present in the next month may be different than this because we're going to be updating a budget revision in the next month and ask for your approval on that. But with our budget present, long-term projections, we have to state certain assumptions. So very similar to what we did in the budget, we're in an ongoing reassessment year. We're assuming a 0.5% increase. But we're also assuming Meridian expiring assessed valuation. And we're also assuming Hamley Station, which is the other TIF project expiring. We're looking at those years and we include that in the year of the expiration of the assumed assessed valuation. So when you look at the long-term projections, you see assessed valuation will move up. We don't adjust the levy because we really don't know how the levy will move. And they both accomplish the same angle. So again, line two is the expiration of Meridian Hamley Station. Our collection rate here is 95.5%. It's a little different because the 0.5 represents delinquent taxes. We assume 5% of the previous four years of uncollected amounts has our collection for delinquent. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. It's, that's really our wildcard in this. Capital projects levy, we're continuing to provide enough pennies and capital projects can be our long-term goals. Right now, it's producing about a million dollars in operations. And we also have the full 89 cents in our general obligation bonds. Compliance with our non-traditional bargaining agreement, we are including the 9% growth for this year's benefits. Going forward after this year, we're assuming 8% growth after that. Capital project costs in accordance with our facility plan and then also payment of our debt payment schedule for our general obligation bonds. This is just a visual of how our assessed valuation has been moving. You'll see, kind of has these little jumps, so it looks like it's flat and then about every other year jumps up. Those are reassessment years. Every odd year, we fall into a reassessment. So 2023 calendar year was a reassessment year, and that's the reason why we're seeing that spike there. Last year, assessed valuation grew by 13%. Revenue for the school district did grow by 13%. It did grow in an amount that was anticipated, but we're limited to our revenue growth by the lesser of CPI 5%, but no less than 2%. When we look at our amounts, so anybody that was in our, our new board member conversations, by chart, it can look very similar. Probably is a copy from the last document. So with this, we have local taxes. So this is all four funds. When we talk about four funds, we talk about general, which is everything that doesn't fall into a specific category. Teacher's fund, which is based on teachers' salaries and benefits. Debt service, which is bonds, so paying our debt. And then capital projects, which is facilities. When we pay our, when we talk about paying bond projects, it's actually coming out of the capital projects. So when we look at this, this is revenue. So revenues, this is all four funds. 72% is local taxes. So when we talk about 94% of all local revenue, that includes Prop C funds and then also other local funds. Additional dollars can include surtaxes, interest, pre-K tuition, and also our funds that we receive for tuition for our victims. So it's a little bit different when we just talk about operations. So again, 94% looks like Pac-Man. 94% is a collection from local revenue. Again, that's local taxes, other local, which is the same thing that are just stated, and then also Prop C funds. We talk about total expenditures. See a couple of big numbers here. 77% of this is people. So that's the blue one and the green. So those dollars, sorry, I jumped ahead. When we talk about this, 46% is people and 29% is cap, our capital projects. So it's easy to talk about people, salaries and benefits. But when we talk about what is the 29%, which is the big red bar there, or big red, hot slice there, we have $7.7 million of this is allocated toward bond construction costs. So $7 million is to McGrath. And then this is also, I want to point out, this is 2223 data. So this is from our year-end financial reports last year. So this isn't what we're putting in our budget for the coming year. So of this, $7 million is toward McGrath completing construction, starting Mark 20 construction at $725,000, which is about $7.7 million of bond, bond construction costs. Of that, we spent about $939,000 on other construction. So that could be $807,000 of technology, but we also spent $132,000 on other building repairs. So of this, that could be some of the investment that we put into the auditorium. So when we look at our operations, which is, this is going to look very different because we're taking our debt out of this and we're taking our construction costs out. So again, of this, we're at 77% of people and the other amounts being supplies and purchase services typically for classrooms and facilities. Our historical data, this comes directly from the information that we report to the state of Missouri through our annual reporting. This is solely operations. We carved this out because we have certain triggers that are built into operations. And we'll see, I don't want to use the pointer, on the operation balance, you see that that's about 64% in 2018, and then we've gone down to 63.1%. One of the things that's been significant in here and an anomaly is the pandemic. So significant savings in expenditures and then also unexpected influx of revenue. Our current budget, so our current budget is assuming fully expending our expenditures and then also a certain amount of revenues that, especially for local revenue and dividends. So those are the two amounts that are somewhat reflected in this. We'll have a more fine, closer to a final figure, especially for revenues, in next month's budget revision that we'll be presenting. And then you'll also see the continued diversion in the operating fund balance. So as a school district, and we'll see this slide later, we strategically spend down our operating reserves. We have, we have a life cycle, so it works like a big circle, lasts about 10 years or so. We're outside of that right now, so we're doing a lot better than other organizations typically do. We typically pass an operating levy, and then we hopefully spend those dollars in an amount that we are responsible and able to show that responsibility to our stakeholders. So our long-term projections, putting into effect all of the items that we stated in our assumptions. We'll see that in the 2829 year, we're anticipating to have an operating fund balance ending with 28%. Why is this not 30%? Because we share the cash flow that we, this is really our floor for how we can operate without short-term borrowing. In today's market, it is not efficient or a good use of district dollars to have short-term borrowing. We're in a very different market than when short-term borrowing may have occurred in decades past. So when we get to a point where we're assuming we will get close to 30%, this is the trigger for us to ask our school board with the authorization to drop below 30%. Doesn't mean we have to do short-term borrowing. It means we have to have an open conversation with you all, asking for action to drop below that. If we can make it past that, great, but we're trying to work this to that 2829 period. This is when we're able to start the conversation about either significant financial control or asking community members for continuous investment. When you get out past this, so this is your six through 10, this is assuming no change. So you'll see the fund balance quickly starts to evolve. We're assuming 3.5% increases when we get outside of the non-traditional bargaining agreement. And then we're also assuming continued investment in plans. So we're assuming our same benefit plan, just the continued investment. When Jamie would talk about this, you probably would hear, we have two control points. We've asked for levies as far as. We've asked for levies as far as an investment or we can control costs. Most of our more immediate controls are on the expenditure side. So this is a visual for you all that hopefully, we added this this year, me and the mouse in my pocket. This is, this is kind of showing the life cycle of our fund balance. So the orange bar and the green bars are showing our operating revenues and our expenditures and the line is showing our percentage. The left side of the chart is dollars, the right side of the chart is percentages. I say that because we've shown this to other groups before and there's a lot going on. But what we want to draw attention to is seeing how that operating reserve is building up after 2011 and then we've continued to spend it down after its peak at about 2017. And then again, we're talking about assumed percentages in revenue and then assumed continued funding in the non-traditional bargaining agreement. Eight percent benefit increases outside of this year and then operating fund balance asking for our board action when we get close, when we assume we get close to thirty percent. Capital projects, so right now we're showing, this is the budget for this year, assuming continued investment of a certain amount of revenues. The amount that's in revenues right now is, is steep because of dividends. So this is our current investment market that's driving this. Long-term costs, so at the time that this was presented, you see the expenditures are about five point one million dollars in the twenty-four, twenty-five year. It's not going to be this high in the budget that we present to you, it's going to be smoothed out further into that period. This is assuming some timing differences with how the payment applications are occurring with Mark Twain McGrath. We've been, we spent those down in payment applications that were higher than the amounts that we had initially assumed because we took our average of those costs and some of those costs have been higher. Some of those have been because we applied for the safety and security grant. So we needed to see those costs spent in a certain time period. We asked them to do that, they have those costs purchased in their warehouse right now and they have pictures and all that good stuff. But we needed that timing in order to be successful in pursuing that grant. And, and we worked. So the other amounts in expenditures here are representative of assumptions for continued costs and facilities planning, so based on those April conversations. And then some continued investment in technology as well. Again, you'll see at the very bottom, the levy drops from twenty-five cents to the four cents at some point. The four cents is incident. I mean, it's just because I haven't pulled it back at operations at that point. Four cents didn't cause any kind of material difference in operations. So right now it's sitting there. So the end result is, Lindsay told me this is confusing, so I, I own it. Responsible use of stakeholder tax dollars within anticipated task for the community support public education in the twenty-nine, 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 thirty year. So by this, we mean twenty-eight, twenty-nine is the trigger. So our fund balance is anticipated to be below thirty percent in the twenty-eight, twenty-nine year. Twenty-nine, thirty would be the year that an April election would take effect. So that would be the first year that if this plan was successful, we could enact those dollars. A lot of this is very familiar because I keep repeating it. Board action is necessary for a fund balance that is anticipated to be below thirty percent and then also maintaining our awareness of our community members. Now, this is an added line item. The political environment, and I'm not going to take a position on this in Missouri, has been very active this year. Some of the litigation that just passed, we're figuring out how to still enact it. So recently there was an omnibus bill that the governor took action on. The legal teams are still working out how to take that and, and put that into action into the coming year. So those changes are not represented in this. This is, these projections were built around April information. This piece of litigation, legislation, not litigation, was not, was not even formed at that time. It was multiple different bills. It became consolidated and it was passed.
And, and how would that impact, I, I, I'm not familiar with that specifically. Was that negatively impact us then?
So it will impact us because what it has to do with this, it has to, it's changing how the found, it's called the foundation formula. So part of the reason why we don't make it into this is because the foundation formula is only around five percent of our budget. So if they make significant change that's toward detriment, it doesn't change our projections radically. For other, now, it does create, I can provide anybody on the board individually the summary of the piece of legislation from the different groups. Some of the things are minimum teacher salaries that won't affect us. Some of the items are funding the minimum teacher salaries or the lack of funding to minimum teacher salaries. That shouldn't affect us because we're a dollar above this. There's, there's impact to the calendars. And then there's also incentives to comply with the new calendar agreements. We are all still working through the hundred plus pages of this document to see how it impacts public education. So I have legislative training and all of our administrators have legislative training and all of our board members get legal updates. This will be a big piece of what happens in the next six to twelve months is how we enact this.
There were a ton of things thrown into the warning bill. The minimum of teacher salaries is kind of a big deal out across the state. I mean, we're above that minimum. But, but it can indirectly come back around to us, I suspect, because funding's going to have to get met. They haven't really provided for funding in the future and who knows what will happen. They expanded the educational savings account stuff, which can indirectly affect us, I suspect, in some ways, but, but I mean, he's right, it'd be hard to work through all the things that are going to affect us.
There are several, I'm not going to take a position on tax relief. Everybody likes less taxes. But there's several tax relief triggers that are all coming into effect next year. So the previous variants of this legislation for school funding or school enacting of demands all had to do, but they had a funding component. So it means they're funded manning. Now you have a minimum teacher salary that has no funding component. So either the state can change certain triggers in the formula, which they've done that with the calendar, to incentivize compliance.
And when you say calendar, are you talking about going from, because I, I was, I thought it was like from four days. Some schools are four days a week, other schools are five days.
So there's two different pieces of the rule in that piece of.
Is that all together in this one English?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's one component that's, and, and again, it's probably great if I share that with people, if you're interested in it. I, I wanted to add that as a line item in the presentation just to be aware, but it wasn't intended to kind of, I don't want to pretend to be a professional on a hundred plus page document, but I honestly, I've read the high ones. The, when I'm talking about a calendar, there's a one percent threshold, that's it. So if you meet the obligation of the calendar compliance from the state of Missouri now, so if you have a hundred and eighty-nine days, which we do, and it's not clear, is that student or is that staff? It doesn't include employment weather. So if you have a calendar that's set at a hundred and eighty-nine days, the foundation formula, which is the state aid formula, will give you one percent to comply. Now, depending on how big your organization is and how dependent on you are on state aid, that might be a huge incentive for you to increase your number of days in your calendar. But if you're five to eight percent funded, maybe it's not that big of a deal. Maybe it doesn't cause it, maybe there's question of how that benefits the organization, whether or not it's funded or not. There's a different rule for four day. And if you're in St. Louis County, how do you fit a hundred and eighty-nine days of student time within calendars that are limited with your state standard for when you can start? Because we have staples for that. And then if you have a school, you know, this week.
Right.
Yeah, I think there'll be a lot more information coming out in the next year plus on how we navigate this.
Well, I think that, that'll share with the calendar committee too.
Yeah.
I have, I have a feeling that as time goes by, people are going to become aware of unintended consequences because there was so much done at once and it was jammed together in a big rush and apparently a lot of political chicanery. And so I think if you identify an unintended consequence and that's resulting in monetary effects that people should know about, I would think MSBA could, lobbyist could work for, you know, adjusting these things. You know, in other words, we got this big massive bill changed. What are the things that need to be changed to put that back and, you know, to straighten some things out that weren't intended? I think there could be action there. That's just me talking. So when you figure out those things, Matt knows more about this than I do. He won't let him on, but he does.
I apologize. I do not mean to throw this right here and out there. I'm over eight minutes.
No, it's good things to be aware of and just to, you know, reach out a little bit.
Some of our partners, or I'm part of a professional organization and they, some of the other school districts are actively saying, talk about these items in public session. Hesitant to it because I don't want to be as seen as taking a political side or something. I work in public education, my kids are part of public education and supportive of public education. So it's, I'm assumed to have a position and I don't want to be held to that kind of standard of.
I think your position should be tied to what, what's the effect of the mandates. Is that your job?
Exactly what I tried to do.
Yep. And I don't think anybody, we should all, we will all, I think, be happy to hear that and nobody should be criticizing you for that.
Appreciate how actual and objective you've been with that.
Appreciate it. We have no action item.
Yeah, okay.
Fantastic information and more to come, always more to come. Yeah.
All right. Let's go ahead and we do need, thank you, Matt, we do need action on the meal prices for the next year and the recommendation.
So each year we agree before this will work on our requirement from Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and USDA to assess what our meal prices are. And every year, Lauren Stephens, our food service director prepares the comparative data. This year we're asking for a twenty-nine cent increase. So before you, you have the twenty-three, twenty-four meal prices and the twenty-four, twenty-five meal prices. We also do a survey of our surrounding school districts of what is milk being sold. There's no standard for how we sell or what we sell milk prices at. So we are recommending a very small increase of five cents on milk prices. That's really just solely based upon our comparable school districts. If you'd like any of those comparable informations or the surveys we did, we're more than happy to share milk, milk price increases with any school board member that would like them for school districts and our surrounding area responding to our survey data. So we are asking for an increase in lunch prices and breakfast prices and milk prices for elementary, secondary. You'll also see a difference with the early childhood costs. We're not allowed to be subsidized currently for early childhood meals. So that is the full price of a cost of a meal for that program. And then also the full price for an adult's cost on each one of these items is for you and we do ask for action.
I make a motion to approve the meal price equity. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved.
All right. Next, we need a manual approval of the P cards, purchasing cards for staff.
So each year, like we said, we have a board policy that requires us to present the list of individuals that are for approval for P cards. Our policy requires each individual name currently to be representative of people that are responsible for this. Each one of the people on this list signs a usage agreement and then they're also made aware of the thresholds of what their credit limits are. The items that have one asterisk are employees that are asked to be renewed through the remainder of this year. The item, the individuals with two asterisks are cards that will be issued whenever their contracts or engagement are coming here. I do want to draw attention to one item on here because it jumps off the page. You'll see a credit chief financial officer, Matt, in the board with a P card of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So to be clear, I do not make individual purchases with this card. This card is solely for the purposes of paying for district level items. So if our theater needs to go for whatever theater, you know, that could be a ten thousand dollar card transaction. They don't have that credit on their card. So they'll ask me to pay for that bill on their behalf. They don't lend them my card. They send me the documentation. I call it, I make the payment. My staff members don't use my card. My card is also connected to our Amazon account. Mr. Dodson has sat down with me and looked at how boring I am with Amazon. We have multi-factor authentication, both through our software and through the Amazon account itself before we make payments, but there has to be a P card or a credit card that's connected to this. So we spend between twenty and thirty thousand dollars a month through Amazon. All of that purchasing is connected to this credit card. All of our utility bills for the school district are connected to this credit card. The intention is to drive dividend. Get a return on that P card so that we can use basically a revenue source that was unexpected to continue to fund our schools. Everybody else on here has the same limit as they had last year and mine's the same as, it should be the same as it was last year. This one is an action item, so we do ask for your approval.
I make a motion to approve the purchasing cards as outlined. Second.
Discussion.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, I just see in here, so it shows Dr. Lane as, they asked her for a newly hired employee and Dr. Zalinski is, so those just need to be switched.
I have those backwards. I apologize. Dr. Lane is not a newly hired employee. Guess I was back.
So that would be one, just one edit to that.
I can change that and I can get that updated and returned. Usually Terry catches me.
That was, that was, why was this wasn't so much that, so these go through June of twenty twenty-four? Not that I'm worried about Brian or Alex. Do our cards expire right now? And so they're on here because they're only here through July? Or do we need to do, are we going to need to do this again, like an addendum with them not on it come July?
So what we will do as part of our offboarding process is we'll communicate to those individuals as they're separating when their card's effective. Their contracts expire June thirtieth. Their P cards actually live past that. They don't have an automatic expiration. They have to manually go in and deactivate those cards.
Gotcha.
But people hand them in and.
Yeah, or we just turn it off.
Right.
But yeah, our typical process is that they're, they're returned as part of the offboarding.
I'm not worried at all. I just was curious, you know, what the process was and if we had to update or anything.
It's, it's a pretty straightforward process. It goes along with, so I click the button, it just says deactivate.
Yeah, I've recently met with Matt to talk through all the accounts payable controls. He runs a well-controlled process.
I wouldn't doubt it.
You forget a lot of things, but yeah.
Are you doing more discussion around this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those are approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is actually an action item. I'm looking for approval. The last couple of years, we haven't had enough girls to play high school softball. And Dr. Ayad's been engaging in conversations with Rosati Kane. And Rosati is in a similar situation with their females. And so they would like to co-op with us and it seems to make a lot of, this one seems to make a lot of sense. For one thing, combined, we probably have right around thirteen girls, which is a good size for softball. And they don't have a home practice field, so it's nice for us because all practices and all home games will be here in Brentwood. So that's always a concern of mine about co-ops is losing that, that home feel and so forth. But this one just feels like a real win-win, so.
That's great.
So the next steps. So, the next steps, if the board approves it, then Dr. Ayad will get in the application to Misha. We don't foresee there being any issues with it, though.
I'll make a motion to approve girls' softball co-op for next year. Second.
Discussion.
So, is it just for middle school, starting in sixth grade through eighth, or what is that?
So, it'd be high school.
Oh, it's high school. Oh, okay.
We haven't had a softball team. It's two or three years. Two years.
Two years. Great.
Have we gotten, I know they're still, I think, surveying, but do we have any idea about any of the other sports? And if this is something we need to look at for other sports?
You know, soccer was, soccer, girls' soccer was still low. I mean, it was more, but it was, it was still low.
Because this will probably tap in, I think it's great, but then it'll, it'll tap into then playing maybe some of either cross-country or whatever, you know, another sport. So, volleyball's in the fall. Cross-country will be in the, in the spring, right?
Cross-country's in the fall.
Oh, track is in the spring. See, I was just curious. I know they're, they're doing a great job. They're, they're doing the surveys and all that. Just, you know, if we can be ahead or at least having discussions with whatever sports need to be. And are we going to make an announcement? I know Coach Robbins told people, but does the community know that we're continuing our co-op with Clayton for football? Or is that just a given that we're doing that? Or is it something we have to revisit again this year or?
We don't have to do anything. We're in a co-op with them until the board would take action to remove. So, you guys would be the only ones that could remove us from the co-op. Then, obviously with Misha, so now there's nothing that needs to take place. But, yeah, I think these are ongoing conversations that'll be good for the district to have. And frankly, I think some of them will make sense and some of them, we might feel that you are giving away a sport that you could bring back or that, you know, depends on your comfort level, you know? Are you okay with having most of your home games away at another school? Because that, you know, is not as positive as some of these other things. But, I think they're great conversations.
And generally, co-ops are, for a while, it's not like it's a year-to-year agreement. This is you go, you join a co-op and that's kind of your direction for the foreseeable future. It's not a one-year agreement necessarily.
Yeah, I, I think generally it would be perceived as a real commitment to each other that you're going to, you know, support each other and probably get uniforms together and share coaches. And so, yeah, it's a fair, it's a fair endeavor. And I would, yeah, you don't want the reputation that you're jumping in and out based on your numbers because at some point, you're not going to be welcomed back, I wouldn't think. But, it's good.
I do think at the middle school level, the JV or the junior or whatever, football, they're already making those connections.
Yeah, they've done that. I think like now they're doing flag football and tackle football and a couple of other things. And I think that's the great thing with this in particular, too, is just communicating that out to the community. So, yeah, it may not be in the middle school, but for middle school parents and students to know that there is, you know, a girls' co-op in high school, I think that just continues to build that pipeline and that excitement for sports.
Any other discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's do a co-op. We do it with University City. Yes. Great. That brings us to the Board of Education, new board member training. I know Mark has signed up to go down.
June 25th.
Great.
Great.
You can sign up when Kate will help you if you haven't already registered for whenever it works for you. You don't have to be the one anymore.
I think I'm doing the one on the first.
Yeah, I think you signed up.
Yeah, I'm signed up for the one on the first here in St. Louis in New City.
Okay. Great. And then refresh training for other board members. Because Kate, do you have a list of who is up this year that needs training here?
Well, everybody, you need to do, two new people are doing it as part of your initial eighteen and a half hours. So, you're covered. But, the other, everybody else has to be new every year.
When is, see, I can never remember when I last did that. What is the timeframe?
I would have to look it up and see what they, it was, even if they did it.
I guess I should pay attention to that.
Is it something new that it's every year? Because I know a couple of years ago, we did, we signed in on something that was a two-year thing.
Yeah, you used to have an option for like a two- or three-year thing or a one-year thing. But somehow that seems to have changed a bit.
To one year every year.
Unless you can, you have to listen to give you something more if you actually go to the annual meeting. Or if it's still just a one-year.
Gotcha.
Great. Actually, that's helpful. Thank you. I was thinking the same thing. I wasn't sure.
Because I think the last time I went was when Melissa was here.
So, you are definitely up for a refresh.
For a two-year.
If there was an option, you could, what I remembered was is you could do this on yourself, on your own, once a year. Or I think you kind of had to convene as a board or a group of the board to do a three-year thing or something like that. And I don't, maybe they're not both available anymore.
There is an option, but I have to check on how long it's taken for your last four, but if you want to do that.
Okay.
All right. Delegate reports, anything?
Well, the Summer Summit is at the end of June. And there will be a delegate assembly and I'm not even, I don't, I'll have to check and see what's up. Other than officer elections, I'm not sure what else, but maybe I can know what that is before our next meeting.
Okay. Great. Anything for the SSD, the council?
Yeah, I was not able to be at the meeting on, I think it was May 6th. But, I talked to Dr. Macklin today and apparently, and he sent me this binder. Apparently, there's some controversy about him being $90 million over a budget over three years. So, they're taking three different actions to address that. One of them is to be reducing, I believe it's a tax levy from seven, seven cents to three cents over the next three years. That'd make up a big chunk of it. And then they're not, I took some notes. I needed, he said he's going to talk to me. I literally talked to him today at 4:30. But, he said reducing staff is another. And then those are the two big ones. The other option would be to have a new tax levy in '27. So, they're getting back together on June 3rd to vote. So, I'll be at that meeting for sure.
Yeah, I went to a meeting last, last week with Dr. Macklin. And yes, without going too deep into it, basically, numbers that were presented to their Board of Education coming out of negotiations, the estimates were considerably off. I want to say it was projected to be an additional $55 million and it's coming in more in the 90 range. So, they had to take some action around that. There were just a lot of things that weren't priced with benefits and with the packages and the ongoing cost of those. So, they are taking some preliminary steps and continuing to plan going forward on. They do have a considerable reserve. But, even that being said, then that's obviously going to impact them. So, that's, that's where we're at coming out of that meeting.
Thank you. And board committee updates. The finance committee has not met recently. I mean, we're gearing, I think the school, the school year is winding down and we will cover the board committees, what they look like and who is on those for this next school year at our board retreat. More to come on that. Kate has given us the meeting calendars, calendar for the next school year, so. And then just some upcoming events. We've got policy and business meetings. Our board retreat is July 17th. Right now, we have policy and board meetings in July. Sometimes we take July off, but we'll, we'll just see what is going on that month as we're winding into summer. Any questions about those calendars? I guess if you want to go to the Summer Summit, let Kate know as soon as possible, if that's still even an option for registration. Okay.
I will not be at the July 2nd if we have the policy. I'll be at a hotel.
Okay. Okay. I guess if I could have a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I move to that we adjourn to closed session. Second.
Can I have roll call, please, Kate?
Marks's room.
Here.
Larry Dowson.
Yes.
Larry Plon.
Yes. Yes.
Lisa President.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.
That's okay.
It sounds like you had a.